Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Thursday, November 14th, meeting of the La Crosse Common Council. I will note that we do have a quorum present and that council members Olson and Richmond are excused tonight. Before we get into our agenda and the Pledge of Allegiance, I would like to recognize Council Member Happel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I very much appreciate your giving me the opportunity to do this. About a month ago, my friend, our friend, former council president, school district superintendent, Dick Swans, passed away, and I know there have been many well-deserved compliments coming his way. I'm going to ask, with your permission, that as soon as I finish, if we could, have a standing moment of silence in recognition of Dick before the Pledge of Allegiance. But I know he made me a better person. You've told me he made you a better mayor. He was one of those people that history sometimes happens in front of us and we don't realize it's happening. And to have worked with him was one of my great honors. I know when I came to the school district in 1976 as a really young assistant principal, and Dick came the next year, 1977, as superintendent. There were many good people working in the school district at that time, but the system itself was really kind of broken. And Dick straightened the system out and made it very professional. When he came to the council, there were extremely many good people on the council and so forth, but he made the city much more professional. And if there was one thing I would say that I remember that Dick taught me is getting along with people. As many people know, he's kind of liberal. I was kind of conservative, but I bet you we agreed 98% of the time on virtually everything. And one of his greatest statements was, "Sometimes it's not so much what you do, it's how you do it." So with your permission, if we could have a moment of silence for Dick, I would appreciate it.
Thank you. For those who are able, please stand for a moment of silence, and then we will go into our Pledge of Allegiance, followed by our invocation tonight. And tonight's invocation is from Pastor Kale Clemerson from New Beginnings Christian Fellowship.
Father, I pray that you would just fill this place with wisdom and understanding and an ability to really hear each other. God, I thank you so much for the great people that are here and that we are honored to have serve us, and we serve them as well. God, thank you. I pray that your will would be done here, in this city, as it is in heaven. In Jesus' name, amen.
We move now into our agenda. The first item is the approval of the minutes of our October 3rd special meeting and the October 10th regular meeting. I see a motion has been made by Councilmember Weaver, seconded by Councilmember Mettinger, to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion on the minutes from those meetings? I don't see any requests to speak up on the board, so please go ahead and cast your vote. Again, the motion is to adopt. That motion carries by a vote of 11 to 0. The minutes are approved. We move on to our reports. Item number 19-1630, a report of the Fire Department, Division of Fire Prevention and Building Safety, on inspections and permit revenue for the month of October 2019. A motion has been made by Councilmember Ostrom, seconded by Councilmember Neumeister, to receive and file any discussion on the monthly inspection report. I see no requests to speak. Please go ahead and cast your vote. The vote is 11 to 0 in favor. The report is received and filed. Next item is 19-1691, a report of the Director of Finance for the month of October 2019. Motion has been made by Councilmember Weaver, seconded by Councilmember Podeski, to receive and file any discussion on the monthly finance report. I see there are no requests to speak. Please go ahead and cast your vote. The vote is 11 to 0 in favor. That item is received and filed. Next, we move on to items under notices and discussion. If you have an item that you would like to be recognized, please hit your request to speak, and I will recognize you. First up is Councilmember Jansen.
I have a brief something to read from the Apartment Association. The members of the Apartment Association of the La Crosse area have always been concerned with opioid crisis and the crime in our neighborhoods. We have had many speakers at our meetings to educate us on these topics. We know progress is made continually. From the discussions, we ask each other how we can help. The idea of a meatball dinner fundraiser for the La Crosse Police Department K-9 program was the answer. This was the first third year of this event and proved to be very successful. 555 tickets were sold. 60 local businesses and the Green Bay Packers and Chicago Cubs donated items for our silent auction, and we sold countless bake sale items. A special thank you goes to Eric and the staff of the American Legion Post 52, the La Crosse Police Department Administration, K-9 team, and officers, as well as members of the community. The last two years, we have contributed $5,000 each year, and this year, the following members of the Apartment Association are here to present the check for $5,750. President Pamela Strickmeyer, Vice President Angie Baumgartner, Secretary Tom Sweeney, Treasurer Dwayne Rouschler, Kathy Rouschler, David Olson, John Rood, Ben Strickmeyer, and Dave and Fran Drews.
Anyone else have an item under notices or discussion that they want to share? Anyone else? Okay, I do have one myself, and I am pleased to introduce Peter Fletcher, who is the new director of the La Crosse Area Planning Committee. And I would just ask Peter if he wants to come down to the podium just to say hello.
There we go. Hi. As Mayor mentioned, I was recently hired as the Director of the MPO, and I just wanted to, I've been reaching out to community members just to introduce myself, tell you a little bit about my background, and just briefly about the MPO, if you don't mind. A little background on myself, I grew up in Coon Valley, so I'm very familiar with the area. I went on as a planner in Milwaukee area for around four years, and I worked in Trump Lake County as a planner for seven years. In the last 15 years, I was with the Mississippi River Regional Planning Commission prior to being hired as the MPO Director. So I've had experience with a lot of local units, governments in our area. One thing I just want to talk a little bit about the MPO. A lot of times, everybody hears the MPO, LAPC. What are they? What do you do? Well, what is a Metropolitan Planning Organization? Essentially, federal law requires if there's an urbanized area that 50,000 people or more are required to designate a Metropolitan Planning Organization. The governors of Minnesota and Wisconsin designated the La Crosse Area Planning Committee as the Metropolitan Planning Organization for the La Crosse Crescent urbanized area. Essentially, the La Crosse Area Planning Committee, LAPC, is a policy board for the MPO. A lot of times, people ask us, "Well, what do we do?" Under federal requirements, there are three things that the MPO is responsible for. We must maintain a multi-jurisdictional long-range transfer placement plan is one item. Second item is we have to maintain annually and update a transportation improvement program. It's a TIP document, and you might have been more familiar with that. Essentially, what a TIP is, is that when there's federal transportation funding, in order for either whether it be for roads, whether it be for public transit, MTU, whether it be like the Safe Routes to School programs, in order for that federal funding to come to our MPO, those projects must be identified in the transportation improvement program and prioritized by the LAPC, and we maintain that. The final thing that we are federally required to do is maintain a work program that essentially demonstrates what we do and how we meet the federal requirements for a Metropolitan Planning Organization. As far as moving forward initiatives, one of the things I want to do is reach out to our communities, certainly provide more information on what we do, and also get feedback from each of the communities themselves, so we have a better communication. Also, the LAPC traditionally has been a transportation planning organization, but the LAPC is looking at being more regional collaboration and looking at things other than transportation. An example of that is the FIRE EMS study that is being discussed. It'll be starting in a couple of months. That was facilitated through the LAPC, and will be partially funded through the LAPC. And finally, we're looking at trying to find new ways that we can better benefit our members. So tonight, I just want to introduce myself. I appreciate the opportunity and taking a few minutes of time, and certainly look forward to working with you and your planning staff as we move ahead in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you, Peter. I would recognize Council President Gall.
Thank you. Jay, were you going to say anything about this this evening? The memorandum? The council received this memorandum today, and I believe the mayor probably did too, would be my guess, as far as the, from the Parks Department under Jay Odegaard, which is, represents a funding refund into the general fund from the money that was borrowed for the harbor project. Now, the reason that I feel this is important, to bring this out into the open, is because this was a promise that was made to the council and the public, and it's a promise that's being kept as far as repayment of those funds. And I thought that it was very important to document that when the first payment came forward and for the future, because of the fact that we don't know who's going to be sitting in these chairs in the not-too-distant future, and it's important that this money, regardless of who's in these chairs, or the mayor's chair, or frankly, even in the Parks Department chair, that we have a record of this money going back to the treasury where it belongs. I think that was important to bring forward, and I want to salute Jay and the Parks Department, and the mayor, and everybody who worked on this for the transparency and their willingness to step forward and do what was asked of them when this was worked on two years ago. So Jay, I don't know if you want to flesh that out a little bit, but I appreciate what you've done, and I think it's an important gesture and something that the public needs to be aware of.
Yes, thank you, Council President Gall. I guess the big thing that I want to do is I want to thank the council and the mayor for obviously having the trust. You know, this was really the only avenue that the city had to take over the management of municipal harbor, but most importantly, ensure that those 185 slipholders had a place the following year. And while I wouldn't necessarily say this is the best option for conducting business or projects, I think paying it back shows that this is a successful way to manage some of our bigger issues, if necessary. And so, again, thank you. I know the slipholders have been here in the past, not so much thanking us, but they've calmed down, and I think they have a great place. If you haven't been down there, go down and check it out. And thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Anyone else have an item under notices and discussion that they would like to share? Anyone else? Going once, going twice, three times? Okay. We will move on, then, to our Common Council Matters. The first two items up, if it's the consent of the council, I would like to leave those until the end of our meeting. That's both the intergovernmental boundary agreement terms with the neighboring municipalities and the sewer contract negotiations. Both of those will be done in closed sessions, as those are updates to negotiations, and so if that's okay with everyone, we'll leave that to the end and take care of all of our other business. Okay. I see heads nodding. So I'm going to move forward, then. Our item, then, is 19-1098, a resolution approving right-of-way vacation located at Decorah Place. This is a reconsideration by Councilmember Richmond. Unfortunately, she is out excused tonight, but I do see a motion to reconsider made by Councilmember Podeski, seconded by Councilmember Ostrom. And we will go ahead and vote on that reconsideration, and then we'll see if somebody could perhaps give us an explanation for that. Okay, the motion passes unanimously, so that item is being reconsidered, and I'm going to just kind of open it up. Does anyone, council, or I'm sorry, Randy Turtenwall's got an explanation for us? So go ahead, Randy.
Thank you. Essentially, the revised legal description is what we're reconsidering. There was a couple of errors made in cardinal directions from north and south, and then there was one more sentence put in to clarify the north line of Government Lot 4. Essentially, those were posted in Legistar and were highlighted in yellow a couple of weeks ago, so if you had a chance to get into Legistar, it is there. And it's the revised legal description, Exhibit A.
Okay, thank you. I see a motion to amend has been made by Council President Gall, seconded by Councilmember Jansen. Any discussion on the amendment, which would be the updated legal description? I see no requests to speak. Please go ahead and cast your vote. The motion is to amend. That motion passes by a vote of 11 to 0, so that amendment is approved. I would entertain then a motion to adopt as amended, and I see that's been made by Council President Gall, seconded by Councilmember Neumeister. Any discussion on that? I don't see any discussion on the board, so please go ahead and cast your vote. That motion passes by a vote of 11 to 0, so that is adopted as amended. We move on to item number 19-1690, a resolution approving the 2019 bills and engineering estimates paid in November of 2019. A motion has been made by Councilmember Ostrom, seconded by Councilmember Christians, to adopt any discussion on the bills and engineering estimates. I see no requests to speak. Please go ahead and cast your vote. The vote is 11 to 0 in favor. That item, that resolution, is adopted. We move on to appointments by the mayor. That's item number 19-1677, to the Aviation Board, Bruce Matthew; to the Building and Housing Appeals Board, Nicholas Kudla Krap; and Dolores Spies; to the Board of Zoning Appeals, James Scherf, Dolores Spies, and George Kimmet; to the Citizens Board of Review, Susan Dillenbeck; to the City Plant Commission, James Scherf; to the Economic Development Commission, David Morrison; and to the Public Safety Communications Board, Sean Kudron. A motion has been made by Councilmember Ostrom, seconded by Councilmember Neumeister, to confirm. Is there any discussion on the appointments? I see no requests to speak on the board. Please go ahead and cast your vote. The vote is 11 to 0 in favor. Those appointments are confirmed. We move on to the suspension of Council Rule 8 for the following items, which does require a 2/3 vote, and that is item 19-1621. Motion has been made by Council President Gall, seconded by Councilmember Podeski, to suspend the rules. Go ahead and cast your vote. Again, this requires a 2/3 vote. The motion passes by a vote of 11 to 0. The council rule is suspended for that item. We move on to report of bids and quotes recommended to be adopted. The first up is 19-1639, which is a report of bids and resolution awarding contract to Fowler &amp; Hammer, Inc., in the amount of $285,000 for the La Crosse Center expansion, temporary barriers, closures, and egress. A motion has been made by Councilmember Neumeister, seconded by Councilmember Ostrom, to adopt. Any discussion? I see no requests to speak on the board. Go ahead and cast your vote. The motion is to adopt. That motion passes by a vote of 11 to 0. Next item, 19-1640, report of bids and resolution awarding contract to Fowler &amp; Hammer, Inc., in the amount of $922,000 for the La Crosse Center expansion building demolition. Motion has been made by Council President Gall, seconded by Councilmember Christians, to adopt. Any discussion? I see no requests to speak. Go ahead and cast your vote. The motion on the floor is to adopt. The motion passes by a vote of 11 to 0. Next, 19-1641, report of bids and resolution awarding contract to Weezer Brothers General Contracting, Inc., in the amount of $1,486,280 for the La Crosse Center expansion CIP concrete. Motion has been made by Councilmember Ostrom, seconded by Councilmember Neumeister, to adopt. Any discussion? I see no requests to speak. Go ahead and cast your vote. The motion on the floor is to adopt. The motion passes unanimously. That is approved. Next item is 19-1642, a report of bids and resolution awarding contract to Wells Concrete Products Company in the amount of $470,745 for the La Crosse Center expansion precast concrete. Motion has been made by Councilmember Ostrom, seconded by Councilmember Mettinger, to adopt. Any discussion? I see no requests to speak. Please cast your vote. The motion is to adopt. The vote is 11 to 0 in favor. That motion is adopted. Next item is 19-1643, which is the report of bids and resolution awarding contract to David Berger Masonry, Inc., in the amount of $506,000 for La Crosse Center expansion masonry. Motion has been made by Councilmember Ostrom, seconded by Councilmember Christians, to adopt. Any discussion? I see no requests to speak. Please go ahead and cast your vote. The motion is to adopt. That motion passes by a vote of 11 to 0. Next item is 19-1644, report of bids and resolution awarding contract to Ted Mansted &amp; Sons, Inc., in the amount of $2,510,800 for the La Crosse Center expansion structural steel supply. Motion has been made by Councilmember Podeski, seconded by Councilmember Ostrom, to adopt. Any discussion? I see no requests to speak. Go ahead and cast your vote. Motion passes by a vote of 11 to 0. Next is 19-1645, report of bids and resolution awarding contract to Fowler &amp; Hammer, Inc., in the amount of $920,000 for La Crosse Center expansion structural steel erection. A motion has been made by Councilmember Weaver, seconded by Councilmember Christians, to adopt. Any discussion? I see no requests to speak on the board. Go ahead and cast your vote. The motion is to adopt. The motion passes. The vote is 11 to 0. Next item is 19-1651, report of bids and resolution awarding contract to Cone, Inc., in the amount of $640,000 for La Crosse Center expansion elevators. The motion has been made by Councilmember Ostrom, seconded by Councilmember Mettinger, to adopt. Any discussion? I see no requests to speak on the board. Please cast your vote. The motion is to adopt. The vote is 11 to 0 in favor. That motion passes. Next item is 19-1656, report of bids and resolution awarding contract to Project to Cone, Inc., in the amount of $345,000 for La Crosse Center expansion elevators. Motion has been made by Councilmember Ostrom, seconded by Councilmember Podeski, to adopt. Any discussion? I see no requests to speak. Please cast your vote. The motion on the floor is to adopt. The vote is 11 to 0 in favor. That motion passes. Next is item 19-1662, report of bids and resolution awarding contract to Vinkin Automatic Sprinkler Company in the amount of $39,600 for La Crosse Center expansion for fire protection demolition. Motion has been made by Councilmember Ostrom, seconded by Councilmember Christians, to adopt. Any discussion? I see no requests to speak. Please cast your vote. The motion on the floor is to adopt. The motion passes unanimously. Next item is 19-1663, report of bids and resolution awarding contract to Cooley Region Mechanical in the amount of $14,900 for La Crosse Center expansion plumbing, demolition, and underground plumbing. A motion has been made by Councilmember Ostrom, seconded by Councilmember Podeski, to adopt. Any discussion? I see no requests to speak on the board. Please cast your vote. Again, the motion is to adopt. The vote is 11 to 0. The motion passes. Next item is 19-1665, report of bids and resolution awarding contract to Cooley Region Mechanical in the amount of $104,200 for La Crosse Center expansion HVAC demolition. Motion has been made by Councilmember Ostrom, seconded by Councilmember Mettinger, to adopt. Any discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. The motion on the floor is to adopt. The vote is 11 to 0. The motion passes. Next item is 19-1666, report of bids and resolution awarding contract to Kish &amp; Sons Electric, Inc., in the amount of $55,653 for La Crosse Center expansion electrical demolition and site electrical. Motion has been made by Councilmember Ostrom, seconded by Councilmember Christians, to adopt. Any discussion? I see no requests to speak on the board. Please cast your vote. Again, the motion on the floor is to adopt. The vote is 11 to 0 in favor. The motion passes. Next is item 19-1667, report of bids and resolution awarding contract to Strep Trucking in the amount of $438,000 for La Crosse Center expansion site demolition and excavation. Motion has been made by Councilmember Ostrom, seconded by Councilmember Kaloe, to adopt. Any discussion? I see none on the board. Please go ahead and cast your vote. Again, the motion is to adopt. The vote is 11 to 0. The motion passes. Next item is 19-1670, report of bids and resolution awarding contract to Mathi Construction Company in the amount of $59,550 for La Crosse Center expansion asphalt pavement. Motion has been made by Councilmember Ostrom, seconded by Councilmember Christians, to adopt. Any discussion? I see no requests to speak on the board. Please cast your vote. The motion on the floor is to adopt. The vote is 11 to 0. The motion passes. Next is item 19-1671, report of bids and resolution awarding contract to Fowler &amp; Hammer, Inc., in the amount of $226,600 for La Crosse Center expansion site concrete. Motion has been made by Councilmember, or Council President Gall, seconded by Councilmember Ostrom, and I would recognize Councilmember Ostrom to speak.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to note that it's good to see all our local businesses on this list. It's good that they can be a partner with us to get this really important mission completed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else wishing to speak? I see no other requests. The motion on the floor is to adopt. Please go ahead and cast your vote. The vote is 11 to 0. The motion passes. Next, we move on to the report of bids recommended to be rejected, and that is item 19-1511, report of bids for Green Island Park tennis courts. The bids were over budget. A motion has been made by Councilmember Podeski, seconded by Councilmember Ostrom, to not adopt. Any discussion? I see no request to speak on the board. Please go ahead and cast your vote. Again, the recommendation or the motion is to not adopt. The vote is 11 to 0. That motion passes. We move on to items recommended to be adopted. That is item number 19-1053, an amended resolution approving the 2020-2024 capital improvement program budget. I would ask we get this on the floor first, and then I know that we have some amendments. We, I do see a motion to adopt has been made by Councilmember Newmeister, seconded by Councilmember Mettinger, and I would recognize Council President Gall to speak.
Thank you. I've got two amendments here this evening, and I'm going to take them separately. The first amendment is, it's an amendment to the 2020-2024 capital improvement budget moving the greenhouse gas emissions inventory Sustainable Energy and Climate Action Plan on page 25 from the year 2022 to the years 2020 and 2021. I have a handout here that I gave to everybody on the council, which shows the funding would be divided in two with $100,000 totaled in the first year, 2020, and $100,000 for the second year in 2021. We reached out to the mayor after we took a look at the CIP budget, and we, everybody involved in this thought it was important for us to get on with this if we could, and we found a way to do that, and that is the amendment that you have in front of you this evening, and I would move that amendment.
Thank you. I see a motion to amend has been made by Council President Gall, seconded by Councilmember Slesniko. Anyone wishing to speak on that amendment? I would recognize Councilmember Slesniko to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last Friday, I attended the first-ever Climate Fast Forward Conference in Madison. It brought together almost 300 government officials, businesses, a business organization leaders, educators, researchers, First Nation leaders, and others, primarily from Wisconsin. They were, came together to work on short- and long-term priority actions for climate change. With the state and federal government failing to act effectively on climate change action, it falls to towns, cities, and counties to lead. I've heard from a number of my constituents, as well as other community members, that feel that the greenhouse gas inventory, climate action, and sustainability plans are very important. With La Crosse adopting a resolution to be carbon-neutral by 2050, we must be proactive, and having the funding for these plans moved from 2022 and divided between 2020 and 2021 is very important for La Crosse to be the leader in our area for this, for these actions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this amendment? I see no other request to speak. Please go ahead and cast your vote. Again, the motion is to amend as outlined with the, that the council president went The motion passes by a vote of 11 to 0. That amendment is adopted, and I would turn it back over to Council President Gall.
Thank you again. We have, excuse me, we have another amendment here, which basically just is housekeeping with item number 475 on page 42, the North Street sanitary sewer between Onalaska and Dead End East. And right now, the source of funds is listed as Operating WWU Equipment Replacement Fund, and the source of funds needs to reflect that it's from the Operating Sanitary Sewer Utility Funds. This makes that change, and I move that amendment.
Thank you. I see amendment has been made by Council President Gall, seconded by Councilmember Mettinger. Anyone wishing to speak on this amendment? I see no request to speak. Please go ahead and cast your vote. Again, the motion on the board is to amend. The vote is 11 to 0. That motion passes. I would entertain a motion to adopt as amended, and I see a motion has been made by Council President Gall, seconded by Councilmember Weaver. Anyone wishing to speak? And then, what I'm going to do, I don't, I don't see any request to speak, so there are a number of items in the budget that do require a 2/3 vote. Assuming that we're going to get consensus here on the, on the motion, I wanted to just make sure and ask any council member if they want to hold out any of those items for a separate vote if we needed to do a 2/3 vote. And, and I'm not going to read them all, but you can see them on the agenda. Is there anyone wishing to hold out any one of those individual items? I don't see anyone wishing to do that, so I will then ask you to go ahead and vote, and the motion on the floor is to approve as amended. The vote is 11 to 0. That motion passes, and the capital budget is adopted. Thank you for that. So we are on to the consent agenda. If you have an item that you want held out and voted on separately, please hit your request to speak button, and I will recognize you. I would recognize, first up, Councilmember Podeski.
Thank you, Your Honor. Actually, I have two, but obviously, we'll do them one at a time. The first one is 19-1531, and that's the Code of Ordinances in the City of La Crosse Regarding Vehicles for Public Conveyance. There was an amendment to this, but after talking with a few people on this, what I'd like to do is refer this for 30 days.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that? So I, I heard a motion by Councilmember Podeski, seconded by Councilmember Newmeister, to refer item 19-1531 for 30 days. Is there any discussion on that referral? I see no request to, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Ostrom, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm just wondering why we're referring this. I'm not against it one way or the other, I'm just wondering what the why might be.
I will take a stab at it. I know Councilmember Richmond had proposed the amendment. I think we still have a little bit of work to do to come together on, on getting this finalized. 30 days should allow us to do that. Anyone else wishing to speak on this? Okay, I don't see any other requests. Again, the motion on the floor is to refer. Please go ahead and cast your vote. The motion is, passes by a vote of 11 to 0, so that item is referred, and I would turn it back over to Councilmember Podeski for your other holdout item.
Thank you, Your Honor. The other one is 19-1113. It's on the fees and stuff, and I want to apologize to Nikki and Terry. I know you've put a lot of work in on this, but I did have a call from a, a person who's had a lot of angst over this, and it was Mr. Clements, and I had talked to him before, and he just, he said he was representing Moon Tunes and a lot of other people, and they, they just felt that we shouldn't be doing this, so I just wanted to get that out there, and I'll probably be voting against this. Thank you.
Okay, could we at least get it? Okay, I see a motion has been made by Council President Gall, seconded by Councilmember Mettinger, to adopt. Is there any other discussion on this item? I would recognize Council President Gall.
Yeah, I understand that there's been some concerns expressed about the, this fee schedule going forward, and I have to say that we delayed this for 30 days to see what kind of feedback we got, and we did get some feedback on it again, but reasonably, I think the majority of folks that are going to be utilizing this program are taking a wait-and-see attitude, are, are not bothered by the move that we're making. I want to assure everybody that if we find out this system is onerous or it doesn't work correctly, we can always revisit this and adjust these later on, but I honestly think that this is a, the, the fees that we're proposing are competitive with our fellow communities, and I think we should move forward on this, and if we get a lot of problems with it, we can take a swipe at it in the future, but right now, it's time to move on, and I would urge your support.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? I see no other request to speak. The motion on the floor is to adopt. The vote passes by a vote of 9 to 2. The two no votes were Councilmembers Newmeister and Podeski. I would then turn it back to the council. Is there anyone else wishing to hold out an item for individual vote? Going once, going twice? I would entertain then a motion to adopt the consent agenda. Is there, I heard a motion by Councilmember Mettinger, seconded by Councilmember Newmeister, to, did I get that right? No? Okay, I heard it from over on that side of the room. Mettinger moved and Newmeister seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye? Any opposed, say no? All right, so the consent agenda and the, and the balance of the agenda has been dispatched with. Let's then move back to items, and we'll do these together in closed session. So the first one up is item 15-1240, an intergovernmental boundary agreement terms with negotiate, or I'm sorry, with neighboring municipalities pursuant to Chapter 66 of the Wisconsin statutes. And item number 19-1628, which are the sewer contract negotiations. I would entertain a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes, 19.85 per N1 per N E, to formulate and update negotiation strategies and parameters. And I see a motion has been made by Councilmember Kalo, seconded by Councilmember Mettinger, for closed session. Is there any discussion on that? I don't see any requests on the board, so go ahead and cast your vote. And I believe for the members of the public and media, we'll be doing mostly updates in closed session. I do not expect we'll be taking any action on these items, but we will be coming back into open session. I did see the motion passes by a vote of 11 to 0, so we are in closed session. Thank you, everyone. Okay, we are back into open session. There are, there is no action that's required on either of those items, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilmember Weaver, seconded by Councilmember Podeski, to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all, have a great rest of your night.